Mr. Ward, please. This is Special Communion and the Comission. We now begin the order. Karl Rupp.
Peter.
Here.
E. Grinch.
Mark Todd.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Joel Street.
Here.
Richard Weller.
Here.
John P. Here.
Harry Sees.
Present.
Charles Whitehead.
Present.
Kelsey Taster.
Here.
Steve Rand.
Present.
Tom Bowers.
Here.
Joy Edmondson, Chair.
Present.
Charlie Beck.
President.
Bobby Thieves.
President.
Ken Arney.
Here.
Steve Chang.
Here.
John Lewis.
Father Father.
President.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sam.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Here.
Kathy.
Present.
Robert Goff.
Here.
We may have our open prayer about Mark Todd and the place of duty. But. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this time together. We thank you for everything that you've done for us. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our counties. We can thank you for our state. Father God, we ask God that you agree with the second chair in the committee. Big Brother, Brother E. Lord is trying to heal bodies. God, we don't need to heal his body. And other Lord has second chair in the committee. Family. Ones who lost love. We ask for a blessing to be a part of it. Lead, guide, and direct. Thank you, Christ, for precious and good. Amen. Luke.
Here. I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we can take a vote to override the veto on the tax rate.
Say it. I have a motion by Mr. Carr to override the vetoes on the tax rate. You have a second by Mr. Aron. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Since it's my veto, I'd like an opportunity to address the commission to explain the reasons for this veto before that goes down.
But before you get into that, can we have an announcement by Ms. Deloach?
Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
There is a clerical error in the tax rate resolution. If you look in the top paragraph, it says 240. However, the breakdown shows that it's 233. So that needs to be fixed. It will be 233. That's what the tax rate should have read. And there is a clerical error on that, and we wish to correct that, so.
The numbers add up then?
The numbers add up to the 233 in the breakdown. However, it was not fixed in the top paragraph, so that's a clerical error on my part, and I take that.
So you don't need for a motion to amend that, should we fix that clerical error? Mr. Mayor.
There's several reasons that I veto this budget tax rate. The first one, inserting statutes. I did come up with 5-2-1-111E1, which specifically states the county budget or county legislative body may alter or revise a proposed budget as to accept as to provisions for debt service requirements. Now, the proposed budget that was presented to you had an amount that was set. It was 10 cents to be allocated to cover debt service. To try and offset or slow the bleeding of funds from the account. The last couple of years, we've taken funds from that debt service to balance the budget without seeing a significant increase in tax rate. You know, that's good to keep tax rates low. It's almost a requirement that we do that, but we've got to look at the way we're balancing our budgets. You cannot pull from reserves that are critical to make your payments month after month after month or after year because based on the information that Finance Director Deloach had given us, if we and you had your packets last month, if we don't fund anything to the debt service account, then we basically deplete those reserves. Going into next year, there will have to be another property tax increase just to satisfy those payments. And more importantly, it may not apply to some of you folks because you may not be here. Some of you have already made announcements more than once that you're not going to pursue seeing on the commission. But what you've done, you've set that commission that comes after you up for total failure because based on the sheet that we were given, the 15, 16 year for debt service alone, you're going to see a demand of 23.5 cents increase. So when you project out those next two or three years, it's very possible that you're going to see tax rates in this county. If you use the property tax as the only stream of revenue, you're going to see rates of $2.75 or $3. Now, that's probably not a big deal to some of you that have been here for a long time because in the days of Truman Clark, there were times when the tax rate was over $3. That was a different day. It was a different time. It was a totally different economy. So we need to seriously look at the budget, go into the workshops, take a totally different approach than what we have today to make sure that that don't happen. But if you approve this budget with only 3 cents going into debt service, then you set yourself up for an absolute guarantee tax increase next year and a much larger one the following year just for that one account, not counting the general funds account. That's one thing. Statute interpretation. I've talked to Attorney Bowers. He probably has a different interpretation than mine. I have searched the AG website. There are no AG opinions that I can find today. Attorney Bowers, have you found any AG opinions that address this specific statute?
Do you want me to go ahead and go over it?
Yes, if you would.
Sure.
Okay.
The politics of when you raise taxes and what year you raise taxes is up to this commission and the mayor. You know, I'm not suggesting that you should or shouldn't raise debt service. That's not my analysis. My analysis is looking at the statute itself. First thing we did when we got the veto and this statute was brought up, we searched all AG opinions and case law. Well, as the case is sometimes, and Dr. Ward is probably painfully aware, this statute also speaks to Education Director in this same section. So every AG opinion, there are only three, and the only case out there was on schools. People litigate school issues more than tend to litigate general county issues. So there's no help from the Attorney General's office. There's no help from the case law on interpretation of this particular statute. Well, I went ahead and started searching other cases, trying to find key words in the statute that may be defined in other statutes and other cases. So that's what you're going to do. That's what you would look for in precedent to show a court to make an argument as to whether you could or could not amend this number. Even gave Libby McCroskey a call at CTAS just to try to get a second opinion to see if any other 81 counties had ever come across it. She said she never had this raised as an issue either. I think that on first blush, when you look at the statute and you read the legislative body may alter or revise a proposed budget except for provisions of debt service requirements. When you just read that, you stop. The first thing that went through my mind was, well, the mayor may have a point there that may mean that the commission couldn't amend that number. But when you look at the other key words, to me, it's not just debt service, it's debt service requirement and other expenditures required by law. So what you had to define at that point, in my opinion, is what is the debt service requirement and what are expenditures by law? What, if you just break down the brass tacks, what does this county have to pay to satisfy its legal obligations? I think we have to make payments on any schools we build, any bridges we build, any jails we build, any improvements we've done, any bonds or loans that we've had in this flow which execute on behalf of the county. I think we have to make those minimum payments. But I don't think the statute says that you have to make it from the inflow of taxes this year. I think it means that you have to make your payments, for lack of a better term, you have to have enough money in your debt service account, either via revenue or through the actual balance of the account itself, to pay your bills. Now, does putting in a lower amount deplete your balance quickly? Of course it does. I mean, that's just, I think Ingrid would agree with that, and I think that's the analysis. But I don't think that this statute would mean that you would have to fund the total amount of your bills every year out of tax revenue. If so, what would you ever do with your balance? And then a second analysis, and a second issue that I would raise, and I think that this is pretty clear, is you would give the Budget Committee, you would almost make it a super committee. If you go with the idea that a Budget Committee could set your tax rate on debt service or the Finance Director could set your tax rate on debt service, what if five of those eight members of that Budget Committee decide that we want $2.50 on the tax rate before we do anything else for debt service? The only thing the commission could ever do would be say no, bounce it back to debt budget, they say 251, the commission says no, this is an endless cycle. And there has to be in every part of government, there's a final decision maker. I think the final decision maker ultimately is right here with this commission. And then ultimately with the mayor's veto, of course. I don't feel that you're required to fund the full amount of your debt every year as long as you have the money in debt service to pay your bills. And Mr. Loach, with your balance with the money coming in, would you pay the bills for 13, 14?
Yes, sir, you would.
And the mayor very well may be absolutely correct. You may be setting up 15, 16, or 14, 15, 16, 17 for a big increase, but for the purposes of the statute, I think it's saying you have to for your upcoming budget to satisfy your debt service or your bills. I think you're going to do most of that from balance. And this one, and like the mayor said, he and I talked about it yesterday, there's no AG opinion, there's no case law. It would be one to take up, but I would much rather have the argument I'm making today than the other one. I don't think, I do not think the state legislature intended to create, give the Budget Committee that much power. I just don't, I don't believe you do that. If you did, you'd have five commissioners around the county, the Budget Committee. I'm sorry if I ran out of time.
Attorney Bowers?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to allow the Attorney General of the State of Tennessee to give his assessment of your answer?
I would love to have an attorney's opinion directly on point on this statute.
Because if you're not willing.
Oh, I would welcome it. The only problem with that is, is just the time requirements to get an AG opinion back sometimes could take two to three months.
We've ignored, we've ignored the problem for two or three years now. This man has warned us. Mr. Grovel has warned us. I think I've spoken against, and we've ignored the lady that should know.
I'm not arguing with you. You may be setting yourself up for a huge tax increase down the road, but I don't know that the law makes you manage yourself any differently than that. You know, the law doesn't say you will prudently manage to make sure that you don't have a tax increase in two years from now or three. It states that you'll pay your debt this year. I can't argue with your analysis as far as long-term effect, but as far as the law goes, I don't, an AG opinion would be welcomed on point. Welcomed. I wish we had one. I wish I had an AG opinion, I could have pulled out, made 24 copies, and handed out, said, here's exactly what the Attorney General thinks, let's go with it. I'm but one lawyer looking at it. I did have three others, though. When you don't have any AG opinions, you won't get second opinions.
As I say, Lord, Attorney Bowers, all I ask for is yes or no.
There is no yes or no on this one, though, because there is no, but as far as asking for an AG opinion, emphatically yes, love to have one. We can request one from Representative Williams today, taking me to death.
Mr. Bowers, if I'm not mistaken, the legislation passed the bill several years ago in the State of Tennessee that each county could adopt. Now, I know this is going to make somebody upset, but when you get 65-year-old and you make $28,000 less a year, this commission can freeze their taxes with these elderly people that makes $28,000. And I wish that we should look at that and take it up.
This has been brought forward before whenever this was brought into law, but hasn't been remised in since then.
We can do that in meetings and the open hearing.
There's elderly people in this county that's struggling to try to pay their taxes. They're done without medicines or grocery or whatever. And we have a very high population of elderly people in Carter County, and I think that that's where we need to look at.
We can do that at future meetings, of course.
Okay. Another reason, you know, I want to commend the commission for finally taking, whether it's the mayor's advice or not, I've been talking about this for two-plus years now, doing cuts, looking at each department independently and making cuts, improving efficiency within the office, doing more with less, operating lean, to keep the tax rate low, keep the burden off the taxpayer. And you attempted to do that this year, so that's commended. I about fell on my seat when I heard the motion hit the floor that we'll take the 5% across the board to cut. However, in doing that, the commission fell way short in their approach because the sheet that Chairman Bowers had last month, all of you had, I didn't have a copy of that at one time, but I did get a copy, the budget 12, 13 amounts for general fund alone. It's estimated that there will be a return to the general fund of about $1.2 million. However, the cuts that were made, cuts that were made, combined with the 12% reduction in insurance premium equated to only about $218,000. So the potential for further deeper cuts to relieve the burden on the property owner in Carter County, we didn't achieve, I mean, that potential, because there's possibly $900,000 more that we should have been able to look at and been able to at least realize some of that to keep the tax rate. That $900,000 within itself wouldn't have been enough to fully fund debt service and get that reserve up to where it would be good so that you wouldn't see these steep increases that have been projected by our Finance Director two, three years out. But it would have went a long way. So basically, that $218,000 is only about 24% of the potential that's being turned back. Another matter is the school system. Now, I want everybody to get this straight. The mayor is not attacking the school system. He's not attacking the children in this county and quality of education. That's not the point. If county government, all of those constitutional offices that have submitted balanced budgets are requested to take additional cuts to relieve the burden, and many of them have complied, and many of them have acknowledged since that initial meeting that they can go even beyond that 5%, then the school system should look at it as well. They're a community partner, a very important partner. We've been told repeatedly that there's been $2.3 million, approximately $2.3 million savings, cuts within the school system in the last two years. However, the budget that you have on your desk today, that budget, 13, 14, general fund or general purpose school fund, $38,995,372. Last year's 12, 13, 12, 13, same, same general purpose school fund, $38,778,200. That line item alone indicates that there's $270,052 increase over last year. Now, how can it be balanced with no increases if we're seeing $270,000 more in the budget that you're getting ready to vote on? That's just a question. It's a very legitimate, very reasonable question. So when we're passing budget for this magnitude, I can understand in your position how things can get by from all sorts. But we should be able to put everything on the table, you need every bit of information that's possible available. You need to be able to analyze it, you need to be able to look at, digest it, and then make the decision because that's what the people that elected you and me to my office did. They entrusted us with the, they taxed us with the job of ensuring that their money is spent properly. And I just don't think that that's been done. There's also been some statements made that the mayor said quietly over in the corner and never settled work through all these workshops. I'm here today to tell you that's not true. Just as every other year, I've offered suggestions. This year was no different. I started the year about the second, third workshop, and I made suggestions to the Budget Committee. But when I finished after about two or three minutes, the chairman of that committee looked over and says, "Mayor, basically, thanks for nothing. We don't need your lectures." So with that, I took a seat, and I allowed it to run its course without any intervention or confusion on the part of the mayor. So I'm here today to ask that you, with this information and this meeting, to reconsider this budget because I think that's what's in the best interest of the people in Carter County. And for us going forward, after this decision's made, whatever it is, you're the one that's responsible for making that decision. But instead of continuing to run our budget workshops with the traditional incremental budget process where we're looking only at the variance from last year, and instead of telling that office holder, if you're not asking for any new money, don't come before us, I challenge you to start now. Let's don't wait till January, February. Let's start now in this budget process. Let's give each and every office holder undivided attention for however long it takes and let's implement a form of zero-based budgeting and allow that office holder the opportunity to come in and justify the need for each of those line items. The mayor's willing to do that. Once you've done that with each and every office holder, then, and only then, when you know what the true bottom line is, with that type of information, you can come into this gallery and you can make a decision on a proposed budget within probably five to 10 minutes. It will take four to five hours. So you've got a tough decision in front of you today, the motions aren't been made, it's your choice. Are you going to do what's in the best interest of the people of Carter County? Are you going to take actions to ensure that the people that follow after you have a reasonable platform for success? Are you going to settle up in a situation where it would be impossible for them to pass a budget without a tremendous increase approaching that $2.75, $3?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask one question. Every time we ask a question about education, I get the response, maintenance of effort. Ingrid Orde, you, where do we stand in maintenance of effort versus the budget, the education budget?
I would prefer the Finance Director answer that.
I've answered this numerous times this year already. I think the state's even been called in to talk to me about, talk to the mayor about it. You are required to fund maintenance of effort for the education. You're also required to have a five-year average for the highway department. If you do not meet those, they will withhold state funds. The state sends $27 million to the school department in BEP. If you do not meet maintenance of effort, they will withhold your BEP funds. I think it's a no-brainer to make sure you meet maintenance of effort. We cannot fund $27 million to the school department. If you do not get the five-year average for the highway department, they'll withhold the gas tax, which is very significant in the highway department's budget. Now, what the maintenance of effort is based on for the school department is local funding only. It does not look at state funding or federal funding. It looks at local funding. That local funding is mainly made up of local option sales tax and property tax. That's the two main sources the school department gets from local funding. As you know, that local funding is split between the city and the county schools. Anytime the county loses in that percentage, they will lose funding. If they should ever gain in the percentage, they would gain funding, but I haven't seen it yet that we've gained in that percentage. The maintenance of effort proved that you could cut the funding by 130,000 this year. Rough number, maybe 131, maybe 129, 130, rough number. $50,000 of that was going to be local option sales tax because we lose in that city-county split, we'll lose in that funding as well. So you could have cut the school system's budget by $80,000. However, the school system has cut over $2 million. There is an increase in their budget, however, they've absorbed an insurance increase for all their employees. Their insurance went up this year. It didn't go down like ours. They weren't fortunate like we were to get it. They're paying 6% to 7% increase just in insurance alone. They also have employees who are on step salary scales, and if they get a year experience, they get an increase in salary. That's not a raise approved by the state. That's a mandate from the state that you put them on that salary scale. They've absorbed those. And there was funding in the BEP formula that gave them money for that. It was not sufficient to cover the whole increase, so they've absorbed that increase as well. So to say that you could cut maintenance of effort, cut funding and still meet maintenance of effort, that is true. You could. Could you cut a 5% for the school system? Absolutely not. If you did, you would lose your BEP funding. Does that answer your question?
I guess, I guess the question is, apples, are we over or under naturally where we're within the fund balance, not the fund balance, but within maintenance of effort? Are we quite a bit in excess of the level that we have to be, or naturally we're not under it?
No, you're not under it. You are over just slightly because we did not cut their funding. Bring the file with me. I think it was approximately $8 per pupil that you were over. Mayor, I think you had that, I sent you that. Did you remember total dollar amount? I think it was $8 per pupil.
Again, it's been a while, but the total amount was about $130,000, of which you estimated.
Which you could cut.
Because you had broken that out with the city-county portion, and I've never sort of been corrected, but that's been a while.
We have a question on a motion. However, I would allow Dr. Ward to speak. He has been standing there for about minutes.
Thank you for explaining or attempting to explain BEP because it's a very complicated one. BEP, he made his own work with BEP. He understands that we get so much money for certain positions within our school system. Just for example, and I will use nurses. Over the years, and with some of the students coming into our schools, the 15 schools, we have had to hire additional nurses. We've got two RNs, and then the remainder of our nurses, I think there's eight more that are empty. Now, we're well over a BEP allotment, so that money comes directly from our money that we have in the school system. We don't get reimbursed for what we spend. But we cannot do without these positions simply for the fact that we've got kids now who have severe diabetes. We've got kids with head limes. There was just a lot of things where, you know, just to be honest with you, I wouldn't feel comfortable cutting anywhere in that area. We've got a lot of positions that are, that we have and were then what's required. But basically, we have that because... But basically, we have that because it's in the best interest of what our students need. For example, our teachers, okay? Our students, like every other student in the tri-cities or within the areas that I'm familiar with, have art and deserve to have art based on the fact that it's a fundamental part of the curriculum. And that's one area that I can guarantee you, if we don't have, we're going to have kids who has the interest to go to the city, and we're going to lose more funds, and we're going to have less revenue. Now, right now, everything that we're dealing with is about revenue, decrease in revenue. We've had a decrease in revenue, and we have had an increase in expenditures. And, you know, it's, it puts you in the red. Over the last three years, not this year, over the last three years, and it was within bias from Ingrid to the board and myself that we had to start looking then. So we didn't wait for this year to start looking to cut the budget. We started in a small way three years ago. Last year, we made approximately eighty dollars in cuts. And it come from positions, it come from not hiring back teachers that retired, retired over the past year, over the past two years. We did the same thing this year. Now, we've got a list of retirees, and if you look at that list, it would be easy to say, "Well, just don't hire any of these back." But it's not that way, and it's not that simple. We had to absorb a range of teachers this year, okay? And then we had to replace some of these teachers that we had to our back because of the state minimum mandate. All right, K three, we're going to have twenty students per classroom with a total average of K three at twenty-five. All right, if you're looking at three-six, you get into a twenty-five per classroom with a total average of that cluster, if you have three groups or three grades, of thirty. And then you do seven-twelve, and then you get into the bigger number of thirty. So see, we have to manage our numbers as our students. And every year, at the beginning of the year and at the very end of the year, in March, we start looking at our enrollment and our teacher roles and to see where our numbers are up or down because there's a good chance that summer, this summer, we would have to move one or two teachers into another area to offset, you know, the balance of the numbers. Charlie?
Do you have any feel yet this school year of how many students you're losing to other systems?
Right now, we, until we do, until after Labor Day, we'll have a firm, usually it's, that's real fun. Our first twenty-day reporting period comes after Labor Day sometime in the second or third week of September. That's when we first report to the state where we're managing. Now, at this point in time, we are, it's hard to guess because you don't know who didn't show up for candidate registration is going to show up, and they always do. By the end of the first week and the second week, we'll have a pretty good feel on our numbers at, but we suspect that we'll be up in places, maybe down in other places. But right now, we'll be guessing if I gave you any indication. But I guess what I wanted to explain is, over the past three years, there has been, it's documented, I've got, I've got the documents and I've got the numbers, and there's nothing. I'm never going to come before this body or anybody, and I'm not going to give you false numbers. I can't lay in your hand papers you want that represents the numbers and the condition of our system, then I'm not doing my job because I pride myself to be more of an honorable person than to mislead you in a way to think that there's something there that's not. We have cut thirty-five teaching positions. Add that up, that salary benefit to retirement, the whole nine yards, that comes to about one point seven five million dollars. Now, there's a lot of the other cuts that we have made that raises up to that two point three. Now, there were some one-time cuts last year that we had to come back this year and refund. So we brought a big amount of power, but we was able to do it. But, you know, the bottom line is, we have made our cuts, two point three million dollars. We didn't make them all this year. And right now, Ingrid, I think, has given you a pretty good idea of maintenance of effort. And it's a formula. It's a complicated formula. And I have met with the state department on three occasions in the last two weeks, and basically, you know, they have told me the same thing, our maintenance effort. We stand about eighty thousand dollars that we could. But I want to remind you of something that happened a couple of years ago. Two years ago, or maybe three years ago, we came before this commission, and we explained the need for additional health science teachers. And y'all funded, you funded two health science teachers with the additional money to one-time purchases of some equipment. Now, we have those people on staff at Cleveland and Hampton, and those classrooms are full. Those teachers are doing an excellent job. Now, if we go to cut eighty thousand dollars, we're going to cut the very money you gave us two years ago to try to make our system stronger and better by giving kids some classes at high school level that will benefit them so that they get out of school, they can go into tri-cities areas and can get some type of job in the medical field, which is one of the areas that's, that's available right now. So right now, we are operating on a pretty tight budget, and our budget has, we did come in balance. Now, I will say this, the mayor should know and understand that we have a maintenance effort because he met with the state department. I have met with the state department, and I have talked to the state department, and he has done so without telling the school board or mayor or anybody else. I think that's not, that's not good business. We should know when somebody is being on our behalf. Our board and myself, Ingrid are the three people that should be dealing with the state department of education.
Dr. Ward, I think that by statute, it gives this legislative body only the ability to either accept or reject your budget so that politically it would not be micromanaged by the legislative body. I think that's why the statute reads that way.
Well, it's just discouraging to understand that if we've got answers, if we've got questions and we're seeking answers, you know, I think at least we would be notified that, you know, we've got, we've got people that's working, are trying to work to cut our budget when they don't understand a thing about a budget.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. We have a question on the motion from Mr. Hodge. We have a question on the motion from Mr. Hodge. I will.
That doesn't stop discussion. Be prepared.
I can't. Hi. We're both on the button now.
Yes, I will go down and press great resolution.
Nancy Brown?
No.
Joel Street?
No.
Richard Winder?
Aye.
Ronnie Coon?
No.
Harris Sis?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
No.
Elsie Kestrel?
Aye.
Steve Marant?
Aye.
Tom Bowden?
Aye.
Joanne Michael Chu?
Aye.
Charlie Vegas?
Bobby Deeds?
Aye.
Ian Arne?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Sonia Coler?
Aye.
Russell Cott?
Aye.
Scott Sang?
No.
Bill Armstrong?
Uh.
Rob Petty?
Aye.
Rob Paul?
Fifteen eyes, motion carries. We have a budget resolution, we'll have a motion on that. Do I have a motion on budget resolution?
So.
Motion by Ms. Keller, seconded by Mr. Sisk, to approve the override for the budget resolution. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Brown?
Mr. Brown, I'd like to ask your opinion on something. How legal can this be that we have all these people in the school system sitting right here voting on the most important budget of the year, and not one read a disclaimer? Not one? Now, tell me, how can this stand?
I mean, if, is there any active members, employees of the school system?
The one that made the motion.
I don't, I'm voting in favor of the school system, and I'm sorry to take that.
Petty is employed in the school system, sitting here.
Any people in Florida state Tennessee?
We're not voting on something that's stated right here.
Would Mr. Arne and Mr. Street mind to read the disclosure? Mr. Street, you voted in the negative, and Mr. Arne, you voted in the positives.
How would that have made ours last week? Go back and look at it. There was not no disclaimer written last week, did that mean? How's that leave us?
Why don't you bring it up there?
Pardon?
Why don't you bring it up there?
Well, right before we got ready to adjourn, I raised my hand, and I couldn't die. We were done.
Being employed in Carter County School System, my vote aye.
Mr. Street, do you mind?
Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I require my argument, and my vote enter only my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. No.
Are you an employee?
Too late to read the evidence or the vote of state commissioner.
I think for our practical purposes, no, it is not.
I don't.
And if you want to have another vote, if that's...
Mr. Chairman, I would ask we have another vote.
Let's have another vote.
Have a say. I think that'd be good, I'm here to say, have another vote. Say it, from your taste. I have three votes, and I will.
Any discussion?
No.
Why not?
We've already discussed it. Question on the motion, I'm ready. To revoke what we just voted on, Kevin Cufflin didn't read her disclaim. I will.
Be prepared. Lawrence Bond?
Aye.
Nancy Brown? Joel Street?
Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I require my argument, and my vote enter only my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, and so help me God, no.
Richard Winder? Aye. Ronnie Coon?
No.
Harris Sis?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
No.
Elsie Kestrel?
I'm employed in Carter County. I have conflict. I have that for a little bit, I don't.
Steve Marant?
Aye.
Tom Bowden?
Aye.
Joanne Michael Chu?
Aye.
Charlie Vegas?
Bobby Deeds?
Aye.
Ian Arne?
Being employed in Carter County School System and our conflict fixed up with that.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Sonia Coler?
Aye.
Russell Cott? Aye.
Scott Sang?
No.
Bill Armstrong?
Aye.
Petty?
Aye.
And Robert Paul?
Fifteen eyes, motion carries. Now, we did have a motion on the budget resolution by Ms. Keller, seconded by Mr. Sisk. We can go into discussion on that. Ms. Black?
On the parking wreck, there is twenty-two thousand, but does that mean that the city will get their part and the county will get their part?
Yes, ma'am, that was brought up in the last meeting. That was an error on my part. We never received a vote to eliminate the city's parking wreck fund, so that was put back in there, and they both get eleven thousand, two eighty-one, twenty-five, I believe, is what they give.
Okay, and on the agriculture extension service, does that include the four-eight?
That would be a Mr. Hart question because he's the one that presented the budget.
As far as I know, that wouldn't go back in the way it's good, it's four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Any other discussion?
Question?
I will.
You're voting, you're voting on resolution five-eight-eight?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's correct.
Read the motion, Ms. Ward.
Motion to approve the budget resolution by Ms. Keller, seconded by Mr. Sisk.
Should that read in the budget that you're also, you're voting to override veto?
Normally to override, that's correct.
Is that Ms. Keller, is that, I didn't make her say that.
Would you restate that, Ms. Ward?
I'm sorry, I'm...
Your motion is to override the veto, is that correct?
Yes, it's a motion to override veto.
Let the record show that she's made a motion to override the veto on the budget resolution and seconded by Mr. Sisk.
Be prepared.
Aye.
Richard, Lawrence Bond?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
No.
Joel Street?
Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I require my argument, and my vote enter only my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, no.
Richard Winder?
Aye.
Ronnie Coon?
No.
Harris Sis?
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon?
No.
Elsie Kestrel?
I'm employed in Carter County. I have conflict. I don't want to vote. I will aye.
Steve Marant?
Aye.
Tom Bowden?
Aye.
Joanne Michael Chu?
No.
Charlie Vegas?
Bobby Deeds?
Aye.
Ian Arne?
Being employed in Carter County School System and our conflict fixed up with that.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Sonia Coler?
Aye.
Russell Cott?
Aye.
Scott Sang?
No.
Bill Armstrong?
Aye.
Petty?
Aye.
Robert Paul?
Fourteen eyes, motion carries. We have a motion to hear. So, lady? Second, I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.